Next item was a conceptual discussion with Pillsbury Realty Development LLC. This is very known as the Woodmont Commons PUD master plan, and this is going to be a very lengthy process. The first part is really what they have to come up with as a master plan. And our PUD basically calls that this master plan of what's going to be constructed has to be consistent with the town itself. And I know Mike Kettenbach is here. He had a nice quotation in the paper, I think, from the very first day of the charrettes that we had back in the beginning of September. And that they're looking for a sustainable, long-term development that has a benefit to the entire community. And I think that is, I think, a good place to start. This is probably what we're going to be doing is probably more procedural at the beginning. But usually conceptual discussions, and this is how I feel, I do let the public ask questions and make comments. And when we, after we have the presentation, we'll have the board go through its stuff with the staff, and then I'll ask members of the public if they have any questions, comments, concerns, or whatever. What I'd like is something germane to the issue that we're just discussing here tonight. But only speak when recognized by the chair. Come forward to a microphone. You have to identify yourself, name, address, and everything. So we'll operate that way. But I want to kind of keep this as an informal discussion. A conceptual discussion by statute is basically an exchange of ideas between a developer and the planning board, and there's no decisions are made, and it's, nothing is binding at all. So, and I know Tim has stuff to say, too.
Just to give a little bit of a background again on the ordinance and the process that is really beginning tonight. Specifically, in the ordinance in section 283, we spell out the process. And really where we're at right now is the conceptual discussion stage with the planning board. What I expect to take place here tonight is a back and forth between the applicant and the board and the staff to discuss, you know, the format, the materials that are required to be in the PUD master plan, some general discussion about the overall scheme and plan for the project. But ultimately, I think what we need to get a handle on tonight is how we want to proceed forward with this. I think it makes sense, given the fact that this is the first PUD that's before the town, the first use of this ordinance, that we take a very measured approach to this. My suggestion is that after we go through this conceptual discussion tonight, it may make sense to take this project into pieces. Look at, if I scroll to what's required to be included in a PUD master plan, the list is quite extensive. We have 25 different specific requirements that are required submission items as part of a PUD master plan. It's not just the picture, the plan layout itself. It's also coming up with a written document that comes up with the rules and regulations that this particular project would then fall under. Because the way the PUD master plan works is if it is approved by the planning board, it essentially becomes the zoning for this particular project. So I think what the applicant is here tonight is to give the board their initial ideas on the template and formatting of the particular process and the proposal. And I think we may look at potentially holding some monthly workshop meetings on this in the interim before we progress forward to a public hearing. With that, ask the applicant.
Okay. You have the floor. Just name, name and address for us, please. Yep. Whatever's most comfortable.
Great. Make people feel at home.
For the record, my name is Michael Kettenbach. I'm the general partner and owner of Pillsbury Realty Development LLC, the owner of Woodmont Orchards and other properties here in the, in the community on both the east and the west side of I-93. As Tim pretty much covered the bases right here as to why we're here tonight, we are here to start the general consensus of how we're going to proceed in a PUD. And knowing full well that this is our first time in front of the community, and this is the first time that this board has been involved in a PUD, we know that the process is going to take multiple meetings, and we're here to work with you. We're available to you at any time. We're available to come for any meetings at any time. We're willing to break it out into workshops and individual groups as well. And we'd like this to be an open and productive process because it's a very large project, and it's, it's something that deserves the attention of all of us and needs to be done right, because it's going to set the framework for the future for other projects like this, not only in your community but in other communities. We've, we've also heard from numerous other communities who are monitoring this so that they could use this process themselves in their development. So we're kind of setting a standard for the state, if you might look at it that way, for other development in the, in the state of New Hampshire and other communities. And I think that's one of the reasons that we wanted to be so forthcoming in the, in the charrette process and to inform people as to what this process is approaching. And I think we did a, you know, there's always mixed bags as, as to the approach, but I think, I think ironing out a lot of the things in the public forums that we held earlier only helped us to get to this point as well. And I, and I, and I hope that we have the same openness and, and desire to try and work with the community as we have had in the past, and that the community was as forthcoming in their comments to us at the, as they were at the charrette. And I think with that in mind, I think we can both come to something that we can live with and be, and be proud of and, and use as a model elsewhere as well. With that said, I'm here tonight with Rick Chellman, who I think a number of you met at the, at the charrette. Rick is from Portsmouth and has been involved all over the world and in the country and has worked extensively with DPZ and Robert Gibbs and others in the, in the planning of intermodal transportation and, and, and these urban designs. And he's here to answer questions tonight and to start the process. He has been already working with your staff and, and trying to develop a framework or a skeleton so that we can proceed as we move along in this process. And I think that's why we're here tonight. And at this time, I would turn it over to Rick because he's had so much experience doing this, and the staff has been working with him to try to develop this framework that I think I'd, I'd like him to kind of take over now and, and go over the overview and then start the process. Thank you.
I'm taking it that you guys have computer screens you can look at?
Yeah.
Not having been here before, wasn't sure about that. As Mike mentioned, my name's Rick Chellman. I live in Portsmouth. I'm a sole practitioner. I'm an engineer and licensed land surveyor here in the state. Work pretty far-ranging, you know, in this country and outside this country. But this is a big project, and it's certainly, it's not the biggest project I've ever worked on stretch, but it's certainly the biggest New Hampshire project that I've worked on. I thought it might be useful just to share a few quick images to set the tone. And then at the end of these, we have, I've brought in images from the packages that I believe you guys downloaded this afternoon, the PDFs that Tim sent you.
They have PDFs in their screens.
Basically, we're talking about the difference between isolated, independent, auto-only access land uses versus a place that's more walkable, bikeable, mixed-use buildings, much like downtown Portsmouth. And these Portsmouth images, I just asked that you, as you think back and you look at these images, and as you think back to your times you've walked around and driven around Portsmouth, put your planning board hat on and think about how you might be able to create places like that. And that's what I've tried to do with this draft master plan package. That, the Popovers building was infill within the last, I think, six or seven years. That used to be a parking lot in Eagle Photo. Very dramatically transformed that part of Market Square. Lots of pedestrians. And think of this, it's aerial from the south end, the difference between this type of residential neighborhood versus the typical cul-de-sac community. Downtown Portsmouth is what we call a park once environment. We hope to have parts of Woodmont also be a park once, where literally people who get there by car drive to a parking spot and then walk around and access multiple uses on foot. Very different than, you know, suburban sprawl. That was during the charrette. That's my radar gun, 41 miles an hour. Speed is an issue when you're trying to make a place more pedestrian-friendly. This is a concept of what's called optical width. If you go from the bottom to the top, and if you think about it as drivers, when the buildings are up close to the street, you tend to slow down because the optical width of the street is narrowed. And it's a much, much, much more friendly place for pedestrians as well. Technically, those 20 is plenty signs. There's actually science behind it. If there's an accident involving a motor vehicle and a pedestrian, and the car's going 20 miles an hour or less, the pedestrian who got struck is usually not permanently hurt. If that car's going about 36 or 37 miles an hour, they're usually killed. So you now pay attention to the speedometer as you're driving around. It's very easy to get going basically lethal speeds very quickly unless you've detailed the streets appropriately. And this is, keep your eye on the car. This shows you what the different environment can be just basically using Photoshop. And I guarantee you that car would drive much differently on that street than that It also makes a big difference in terms of issues like air quality and VMT. I found from an analysis of downtown Portsmouth that the exact same land uses assembled in a suburban manner will generate more than twice as much daily traffic. Question came up with staff the other day, you know, can you build this new? And the answer is yes, you can. This is a project I worked with DPZ in Gaithersburg, Maryland, called Kettlin's. It's a 1988 rendering on the left and a 2003 aerial on the right. And the only thing that's been photo touched in the one on the right is making the water look more blue. But it's, it's a, it's a real place. None of this was here 20 years ago. John Michaels has shared a lot of history books with me for London area. I haven't gotten through all of them yet, but certainly a rich, rich tradition here. When you look at these renderings that DPZ did, again, think back to look and feel, form, and does it feel good to you? Does this, does this seem like a good thing or, you know, and we can come back to it. That's the packing, the old packing building where we had the charrette. This is the east side of 93, sort of an Italian hill town. And again, it's, it's the details of the buildings up to the street, pedestrian scale, parking to the rear. The rules of urbanism are not complex, but they need to be followed. And in this particular rendering, that street in the middle's been drawn too wide. So we did have a charrette. That's not why we're here. This is why we're here. And I've been actually very much looking forward to this first discussion with the board. I was on a planning board up in Tuffinboro for nine years myself, so I know what it's like on the other side of the table. What I've tried to do, and staff has been very helpful giving input, is create two documents. There's a series of the PDFs that you received, but I bound them in two sets. One's an 11 by 17 set of basically plan views, and the other is eight and a half by 11. It's going to be the, sort of the rules for how this could work. So the first page, TND1 of the master plan, lists the overall list of land uses that are blown up on the right. And the commercial numbers are pretty much largely from Bob Gibbs' market analysis. The dwelling unit count of 1,300, we're open to input from the board. I heard from several people during the charrette that they thought that more housing was needed for affordable and seniors. So that's a dialogue we can have. The project will be all on sewer and water, so it's not an issue. And it, the PUD allows up to six dwelling units per acre, which would be over 3,000. The next level, just sort of made sense to me since we've got 93 through the middle, that the first sort of breakdown would be that which lies west of 93 and that which lies east of 93. And so if you add up the W1 list of land uses and E1 list of land uses, you'll actually get more than what shows on the first page. Because this establishes, if we agree on this framework, this will establish the overall maximum. And then this will establish the maxims on each side of the highway. And then the most detailed breaks down into a series of parcels. The ones that look sort of yellow, green on the left side, they look more yellow on my computer, but in the text document, for example, I've tried to anticipate a few things, such as, since those are perimeter lots abutting neighborhood residential, I'm saying, at least for beginning discussion, that they ought to stay residential. And that if you're going to have an office in any of those lots, for example, it would only be a home occupation office. So food for thought, you know, you'll think of other things, lots of other things that I haven't thought of, but I've made placeholders for things like this so we can sort of walk around the, the site and the plan and figure out what makes sense. One of the requirements is to submit some traffic information. Since the project is likely a 30 to 40-year project, I don't think it's fair or reasonable to do any traffic analysis beyond what the PUD says. And that says, tell us how much it's going to generate and where is it going to go? And then identify intersections we think, or locations that we think we're going to need to study or add improvements. So that's what those two sheets are. This is the cover of the written portion of the master plan, document two. The list of allowable uses is straight out of the PUD.
Sorry. Must be my wife.
Haven't heard that one before.
Here we go.
The PDF that you got this afternoon, by the way, still has truck terminal in it as allowed use. We're not proposing a truck terminal, but this, this does not. This is an important point. If you look at the, your copy of the master plan and then these two copies of the master plan, the written part of the master plan presently, I'm proposing to say that from a master plan perspective, these three plans are all the same, even though if you look at them, they're obviously somewhat different. So you're, by putting this in, I'm proposing that there's quite a bit of flexibility at the master plan level, and it's at the subdivision and site plan levels that things will get more specific. And at that, at those levels, you know, actual traffic analysis will have to be done as And little things like, this is the same image left and right. Let's say the master plan showed the building that looks like an E down by the building that's sort of like a big L. I'm saying it's not a problem for that to move to a different location and for where it used to be to be filled in with other similar mixed-use buildings. So it's, at bottom, basically what you're approving, if we get to that stage with this process, is an overall list of what could happen here. And you're also approving the beginning of a process of lots and lots of meetings with your board to get more specific with site plans and subdivision plans.
Keep the board busy for the next 20 years.
It might. And that's, that's it for me projecting to you. I'd really like to hear from you and like anybody else, Mr. Chairman, as you mentioned. There's a lot of information in the package you just received this afternoon. You're going to have, I'd like you to be able to get your arms around it. I don't know if anything, maybe you've had any chance to think of anything already, but I'm here to help if I can.
Just, we know, we know that this is as we progress, people are, we're going to provide more and more information as you're going to provide us with more information. And we're going to need time in between each meeting to digest what we're all talking about. So what you have today is, you know, a limited book that's going to expand, and we're going to fill in the blanks as we move along, and people are going to digest it as we move along, and we're going to refine it as we move along. What we're trying to do is say, here's the basic framework, the skeleton, if you might, as, as to what this process could be. And let's try to work out this framework in these meetings, digest it, and then come back, and then do it again and again until we feel that we're at a point where we can finally take it forward. And it's going to, it is, it is a process, but like this you've just received, and you need to digest it, and then we need to talk about it. So this is, this is why we're here, and this is why the process starts.
Yes.
Just a quick comment, Art, for the board members and to the public. As Rick mentioned, we did just receive these this afternoon. I will be on Friday, when I return after the holiday, uploading these to the town's website, so they will be available for people to take a look at on the town's website as well.
Yes, that was going to be my, is to, is how do we get this out to the public as, you know? Quickly as possible, because this is, this is our first, first look at it. So it's, we've got a lot to digest. That's my, my feeling. I had a lot to digest for the charrette, but a lot of that was getting input from people and everything, and a wide range of ideas and everything. But I think even if we have some hard copies available in Town Hall would be, because not everyone has a computer.
Certainly make those available.
Some here, some in the library also, you know, that people could look at.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just from, take my planning board hat off. So from the town council level, one thing that we will be, you know, I would be looking for as the ex officio from the town council is, is something that, you know, I've mentioned multiple times, and that I would urge the applicant to get together with our life safety people, whether that be our, you know, with staff, so with our fire department, with our police department, so that we can get an understanding of what will be required to support this, how we'll work in concert to make that happen. And I'll leave it to George to comment for the school board side.
No, I think that's exactly what the school board's going to need as well, as far as build outs, if you're looking at affordable housing, you know, what the impact to the school system is going to be, how we're going to handle that, as well as, you know, John points out, you know, we've got the same situations. If you've got a condensed neighborhood, I'm going to be looking for things as bus stops. How am I going to move those kids to a school safely?
Certainly.
It'd be great if we could look at things, and this I'll put my plug in now, bike lanes, those types of things, so I can get kids on bicycles getting to where they need to go.
Thank you.
Anything else, Tim?
No, I think at this point, as Rick and Mike had mentioned, this really is basically a skeleton at this point. It's, it's a basic framework. There aren't a lot of details in any of the materials that have been submitted at this point. There's a lot of things that are required by the, by the ordinance that are going to need to be plugged in over the course of the series of meetings that are going to take place here. I'm relatively confident that the board will provide the appropriate input as well as the public, so that we come up with something when we get to a public hearing that we'll really spell out how this is going to be developed in the future.
Andre?
Just a, and I think a lot of those points have already been mentioned, but if there's any point at which the citizen should be engaged in, it should be in this point, the master plan, much like a community master plan. What goes into it dictates, sets the blue plan of what you're going to see in the future. So if your input in this stage of the game, as well as, you know, the input that are received from the design charrettes, the master plan is the key element of that. So later on, when we, when Mr. Kettenbach and his staff starts to present site plan, it's going to be based on this master plan. It's going to be based on the input that received.
This is what sets the tone.
That's correct.
As when we do the master plan for the entire town.
Correct.
It's, you know, a lot of, a lot of brainstorming at first, you know, getting, getting ideas and getting input, and then developing something more strategically, which a master plan is really is a strategic plan. I'll go to the board members if you have anything. Chris?
Yeah, I have a couple of, couple of questions, actually, three questions. Going back to your comment regarding, you know, flexibility in, within some of the areas, so looking at the master plan level two, for example, in the W2-1 area, you'd be looking that, at this level, at this point, you're kind of putting general terms of what you're going to put in there. You've got, you've got a design in there right now, but you're looking for flexibility that that might change as you get closer in on the design. Is that, is that the correct understanding of that?
Yes. One point to stress here, this is a real project, and, you know, it's going to get built. So that's, it's not an academic exercise. And one of the reasons to make sure that it can get built is to provide some flexibility so it can respond to the market. You know, we think we know where, and DPZ thinks it knows where everything should be, but, you know.
Tenant's going to come to you and say, I want it here.
Exactly. You might find a tenant who says, you know, I want to be over by 93. I want to be in the town center. You know, and that sounds good to me.
So the premise is that within, if you designate an area with a maximus, the W2-1, that's what would be in there, but it could be somewhere in there until you get closer into the finalized design?
Yes, the concept on, on the Level Two plan is that within W2-1, the blue, basically those uses could go anywhere within the blue area.
Okay.
The yellow, as I mentioned earlier, stays residential. The sort of middle bluish-green is more flexible and more commercial.
Higher density, yeah.
Right, right. So this is how I, one way I thought to approach this, and I, I know it can work, and, you know, if we work together to establish the right rules and regulations and.
I think part of the back and forth we're going to need to have over the coming months is to what level and how, how small do we want to see this level? Do we want to see it as large it is, as it is here, or do we want to see it smaller? Those are the types of back and forth that need to take place over the coming months.
I, just as a comment, two other questions, but as a comment, I did very much like the way you laid that out of, you know, where, where there's currently single-family homes, you're planning to put single-family homes, and then, you know, where there's new single-family homes, they may have more higher density. There was a nice compromise in that. One of the, I know big question marks was exit 4A. It looks like that area up to exit 4A, above the current orchards, Pillsbury Road area, that, that could still be developed without exit 4A necessarily going in. I know a lot hinges on that. Is that, you know, you'd still be looking to develop that, that area out? It looks like a good design.
The west side is not very heavily dependent on exit 4A at all.
So it's the, the area on the other side should be more, the things retail, more on that side, retail and residential?
It's, it's much more heavily commercial.
Okay.
But it is mixed use, is also residential.
Okay. And then the other comment I had was, there's a fair amount of public here today. I know we're going to have several of these meetings, just to outreach to all the folks that live in the surrounding areas there, find some way to communicate with them when that, when these are going to be going on, whether that's getting folks emails and just canvassing the, the community around those areas. You know, if you get the abutters in here and they get to voice their concerns and hear what you're talking about putting in there, it will lay a lot of fears and, you know, make it a lot smoother, I think.
Certainly. That was part of the purpose of the charrette, to try to do additional outreach, because it's just, you know, this process is, it can't, this, this has to be more constrained, you know, by, by law and rules. So the charrette was basically intended to be a little bit more wide open and just free-form and, you know, have folks stop in. And having done, I don't know, 150, 200 charrettes, it was a pretty good charrette. You know, there were, I think we got some good feedback.
I just know from best experience, John, this is something I've always hear from John, if you get the abutters in here and you explain what you're doing.
What we always say is the best predictor of future behavior is past behavior. So we, we've sat through many hearings in which someone comes up and says, you know what, this first time hearing this, you may have been talking about it, but I didn't hear you, or I wasn't contacted. And then what generally happens during that meeting is, is we just stop and, you know, strongly encourage you to go have a conversation with that person so that we can all move forward. I think what Chris is trying to, you know, articulate is, is the more proactive you are, one-on-one, we have found that those applicants have been much more productive and successful when they come to the board.
And in that, in that regard, Mr. Farrell, we, we have our website going online next week, and we do plan on doing mailings to abutters as we go through the process.
Fantastic.
So I- So, I, I think, I think that we will try to be as, as, as informative to not only the abutters, but to the community as well.
Thank you.
Can we have a link from our, our website to your website?
We'll work that out, but it, we're ready to, it's ready to go online as we speak. So, then we'll, we'll work that out with the staff and, and whoever else, because we'll have to have multiple links to multiple things, because I know that there's already links to, to a number of websites already that are going on in the community right now, and we'd like all of them to link together. So, you know, so if somebody goes to one website, they can jump to the other website and, and see and ask and, and pick up the information, so that they're getting it real time, and that they're getting it verbatim. We don't want rumors out there.
That'd be great, thank you.
My pleasure.
What's that, Chris?
Final comment, if you can fix the traffic pattern in and out of the market basket, I'm hats off to you.
Let me do the board for us, you're honest, I, I see you there anyway. Rick?
I'm all set.
You have anything else?
I'm all set.
Dana?
Nothing right now.
Okay. Mary?
I know you did take many email and addresses during the design charrette, so my expectation is that you'll utilize those?
Yes, absolutely.
Let people know?
Yes.
Even as a first blast, and then to, just to say, do you want us to get back in touch with you?
We log every one of them.
Good. And the other thing that I want to say is, I, I know what you were trying to let us know about when you were saying that the master plan's going to look like this, the site plan may be slightly different, but it still has all those components. I just want, you know, us to make sure that the audience realizes that the components are going to stay the same, they just may not be in the same place.
Same configuration.
Correct.
Right. But you're not going to suggest that we have, or you're not going to, in the master plan, say that we're going to have a hotel and then come in with a strip joint, you know what I'm saying? It's not going to be a different...
Is that an allowed use?
Not ever.
How's up, John?
I was just curious, I mean, I...
SOBs are not permitted in the PUD. They use some acronyms.
Delevity's great, though.
The way, Mary, if I may, the, the way it's currently worded, you could have something designated an office that became retail or residential.
Right.
But within those shaded areas, you know, you couldn't put a, a hotel from W2-1 onto W2-6, for example. Not, not allowed. And the way it's also worded presently, in the written document, I said that only office or hotel could go from the east side of 93 to the west side of 93. Something else may come up, as in the course of our discussions with staff, one of the issues is the hospital. If that became an early phase proposal, it's going to be more of a traffic problem than if it's a later phase proposal. So, we may need to have a separate little discussion about that at some point, and we'll certainly be talking about it more with, with staff.
And do you have hotels talking to you? Do you have a hospital talking to you at this point?
We've been, we've been talking to hospitals. We've had some, there's been a lot of indecision in the hospital industry because of, particularly teaching hospitals, because they don't know where they're going to be at. And they need to sort that out because of the healthcare issues that are currently facing them. It's not a matter of funding, it's a matter of where they're going to be out and their long-term sustainability, critical care. There's 33 new million people going to come on, onto, onto critical care, and there haven't, there, there haven't been an equal number of doctors per, per capita increase in the country. So, they're trying to figure out how they're going to handle it, and a lot of larger institutions are trying to figure out how they're going to handle that issue up front right now. So, that's where we're at with that. Hotels, we've been bombarded, so...
Do you have an expectation that you're going to start with the original structure that's there and work out?
Actually, I think the development plan will start more towards the southerly portion of the property, where we have the community uses would be designated, and the mixed use in the southerly portion would be the first phases that'll come online to set the tone and the tenor of the overall project, and to show that the project is real on a faster schedule than people might, might anticipate. I think it's, I think people want to see something in the ground as soon as possible, and I want to see the tenor of what's going to be there, so that they know that it's real and that it's going to happen, and that it's going, that it's progressing, and that, and that it might help alleviate some of the fears of, of the size of this project. So, that is the, that is the intended goal, is to start on the southerly side and start with that core kind of village, town, center, buildings and mixed use to start there, and then work its way up and out. And then depending on where 93 is, that also will help determine how fast things progress. And if what the governor says in six years, he wants to see I-93 completed Dex at seven, well, things will come online a lot faster than they do, and if it doesn't, things will come online a little, a little, on a little slower, a little slower pace. But there is synergy, there's, I know that a number of developers looked at these properties over the years, and I know that there's pent-up demand for this particular type of residential and this particular type of, of, of commercial, and the particular mixed use that's out there. People like this type of product regardless of the economy. So, I think we're going to, we're going to put our money where the mouth, where our mouth is, and start the project, and actually show the synergy of, of a town center right off the bat, so...
Thank you.
Okay.
Couple of process questions, I guess. Master plan comes first, so we'll have an approved master plan before we see any site plans, correct, being proposed.
Absolutely.
What is the planning board's authority to approve the project versus going to the town council? Do we have authority, or is the town council up to approve the master plan?
The PUD master plan is a function of the planning board, the planning board approves the PUD master plan.
So, jurisdiction for the project really rests in our...
Correct.
On this board?
Yes.
And that's, that's by statute also.
Okay. Because I know zoning changes typically have to go to the town council, and obviously this is a zoning change.
Yeah, only adoption of zoning is...
It's, it's not necessarily a zoning change, Lynn. The, the zoning change was the adoption of the PUD ordinance itself. That sets the framework, which now leaves by statute the PUD authority with the planning board.
I, I understand that, I just want to make sure that everybody out in the general public understands that as well. Okay, at what point in time do we start looking at impact fees and how we assess impact fees? You know, John had mentioned going to the fire department, the police department to start developing what the requirements are going to be. I know a project this size is going to have significant infrastructure impact.
The, the, by statute, we cannot assess impact fees until there's an actual site plan or subdivision plan in front of the board.
So, that'll happen down the road, once we start seeing site plans being submitted.
We can, we can start anticipating impacts on the broad scale level, but in terms of the actual assessment of the fees, we cannot do that until there's an actual application in front of the board.
What's our plan for involving the town of Derry in these discussions? I, I look at this project, especially the eastern side of the project, having significant impact on Derry, and I don't know if it meets the criteria for regional impact, you know, based on our discussion from the last meeting. I don't know if it does or not. I mean, it does to me, but statutorily, I don't know if it does.
Statutorily, at this stage of the game with the PUD master plan, it doesn't fall under the regional impact statute. Individual projects likely will, but from my understanding, I know the, the project applicant in the, has been working with the town of Derry, and we are certainly inviting the Derry Community Development Department to be involved in this process as well.
Okay, good, I want to make sure that that happens, so... And I guess just the last question, you know, if everything went according to what you see happening, the chain of events, when would you anticipate to break ground? When would you hope to break ground?
I would, well, I would hope to break ground this spring, but I mean, I want to, I want to be realistic, and we, you know, if we're through with the process, we would start immediately after the process is over.
I'm just wondering what your expectations are.
My expectations, if, if we're done with this process, I would start as soon as that process is over, and hopefully that would be this spring.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
George? Nothing else? Scott?
The only question I have, you had talked about deferring like traffic studies and traffic flow, when would that take, when would you start to look at that? I know everything now is just conceptual, so it's...
The first site plan.
The, in terms of the, the way the PUD ordinance is written, the, the requirements for the PUD ordinance are an estimated trip generation by the overall project, how, how those trips are going to be distributed in the existing roadway network, and then identification of potential areas where intersections may need improvement in the future. As part of any site plan application, it's a requirement for a traffic study for every individual site plan that would come through after that takes place.
Mr. Chairman, just to offer further clarification to Lynn's question, with regards to infrastructure, police, and fire, I've, I and other members of the council have had extensive conversations with the town manager around what our point of view is from the standpoint of what is going to be needed. I know the town manager has shared some of that with the applicant, and that it is first and foremost in our minds. We are not, we are not going to wait for site plans or impact fees, we are going, we have already proactively been having conversations with what our vision is and what we would need to support this type of a project as it builds out, and what would be needed from a life safety standpoint. We've got to, you know, what I, what I've asked the town manager to do is to encourage the police department and the fire department to actively engage with staff and with the applicant, and figure it out, and then tell us what the answer is.
Good. I'm just nervous for the project of this scale, that, you know, we, we need to know as much as we can find out as early as possible.
And that is one of the requirements of the PUD master plan, is there has to be an impact assessment of public safety needs as well.
Yeah, I think, yeah, it's good. John Michaels, can you add to this also?
Yeah, the...
You have to come to the microphone.
Yeah, but just to...
Name and...
Yeah, John Michaels, I'm the attorney for the developer. To follow up on Lynn and John's questions, we started engaging with the fire department and the police department last June when we had a pre-charrette, and our intent and will be to, to keep them informed every step along the way, you know, they had people there for the charrette, you know, as we go through this step, we're going to keep them informed, and, you know, our idea is to try to keep every one of them involved, but they've already been involved for months.
One of the things I'd like to add to that is, is that people don't, a lot of people still don't realize that we had a pre-charrette to the charrette, in which we involve town staff and planners from multiple communities, and from regional authorities, and all the state agencies, and they all attended, and they all gave us input as well. So, not only did we have a community charrette, we had a, a, a staff charrette, if you might, starting with all divisions of the state government, and with your, your town, and other regional planners. So, we wanted to cover those bases because we understand the overall impact of something this size in, in, in just not only your community, but, you know, in southern, southern New Hampshire. So, we, we did do that as well.
Mr. Chairman, for clarification, the council did not attend that charrette, the, I, I don't believe the planning board or any of the other boards were invited to that pre-charrette.
No, it was strictly staff-oriented.
I didn't know about it till after the fact, so, yeah. Notice, you've been waiting there, you can feel the energy.
I think when you go to the stop.
So, as you jumped to the board, a couple of things. We already had the opportunity to look at these panels a couple days ago, and I would like to stress that a lot of things on this panel, not only for planning board, but for also for the residents to realize that the things that are shown are only placeholder. When you will look at the, for example, on the sheet showing the transportation improvements, and there, there may be a couple red stars, it could be, you know, after we go through the workshops, after we'll sit down with the staff, this could be much more, or I know it's going to be more stars on this, on this plan. The same thing, the same thing, if you go and look at the traffic pattern, to Scott's concern about that right now this project shows only the impact of the additional traffic from the project itself in a different areas, and there's a number assigned to it. And as, as you know, this is just a number right now as a placeholder. This number could be much different, could be three times, four times bigger, and it could be after we will look at this traffic study, and what would be the scope of traffic study, we'll look at the redistribution of traffic, not only what the project, and at what phase that project caused the redistribution. If you have a connecting road, then you change the traffic redistribution from one town to the other for different areas. So, that's very important, because if Tim will post these panels on the, on the website, and people will look at this, they will point out, well, what about this in this, and what about this one? This is only placeholder at the beginning, that they have to place something, because we had this discussion that through the workshops, we will, again, will add more, subtract, or whatever, we'll do this. So, this is, I think, important to stress. Also, it's important that we already started that way, that not only coming to the workshops, but at any time come and meet with the staff to work out the issues between the workshops, so we do not have to, you know, then present the stuff to the board at the meeting. We will have already, you know, a lot of stuff worked out during the, during those meetings. But these are the things that I would like to stress.
Not my job security, huh, guys?
So, how many miles of roadway are, are in there, you're honest?
Okay, I forgot the most important, yeah. Because when...
Here we go.
When the discussion was here about the fire, the fire, fire department and, and the police department, as only the safety, you know, impact for these departments only, but if, we don't know yet how many roads will be public roads. If they're private roads, there will be their concerns of maintaining a drainage system. But if we're in here, several public roads, and this will not be a regular subdivision with open swales, this will be majority closed drainage system with hundreds of structures, pipes, so that would be substantial impact on our very small department that we have as a public works department for maintaining the system. So, this is additional things we have to think about.
Oh, yeah.
We're thinking about those things.
I've got your budget, I've got the budget book right here.
You have budget books. You gotta get a big tab on the highway.
So, you gotta get a rotor-ruder franchise now?
Okay, anyone, anyone from the public, if you have any questions or comments, the microphone right here, just identify yourselves, name and address for our records, you have to come to the microphone. That's so people at home listening on TV can hear, because we usually hear ourselves here, but people at home can't read lips, so...
Hi, I'm Fran Galen. I have a very simple, basic question. Who pays for all the infrastructure development? Who pays for the roads? Who pays for the increase in, in all the fire department and, and police and schools and, who pays?
You're looking at him.
He'll be the developer.
So, ongoing, all the...
As the plan morphs, yes.
So, how, so that's all been worked out already? Where, that's not going, because, I mean, it's just, I mean, my, personally, my concern about the...
You want me to take them?
It's a part of the, it's a part of the process.
Okay, I went to what, only, was only able to make it to one of the charrettes, but, but some things about it seem very intriguing and could be very positive. My two concerns are, is it going to be a positive influence on the character of the town and people's experience living here, both in the development and those of us who already live here? And is it going to be revenue positive or, or kill us?
Okay, so I guess, I guess you just said, that's, that's mine?
Is that all?
Okay, so, let me see if I can answer this question. So, as the vice chairman of the planning board, as we do with all developers in doing my job on the planning board, we met with developers, these questions were immediate and forefront in the discussions with them, and with staff and with the town manager. So, they came about immediately. There have been very similar discussions from the standpoint of that we need to work out some sort of a, more of a unique relationship rather than a standard relationship. I think some people saw in the, in the union leader that the applicant said that this would be a billion-dollar development.
At our current tax rate, that's how much money?
A lot. So, this is our, this is our assistant assessor right here, so, so...
How he figures all of our taxes?
Lot, a lot, not enough, a lot.
So, part of it is, is that that revenue stream will exist, as, as they build out, that revenue stream will exist. As they go through the change of use process, there'll be dollars that they'll pay into the change of use process. Some of the suggestions that have been made publicly to the applicant is, is that we feel that it would be, and when I say we, I, I ran for town council, not, not because I'm crazy, but because of this project, and because of all the reasons you asked. You know, what we've expressed, some of us, the planning board members, some of the town council... council members, to the developers, and I'm looking straight past you, Mr. Kettenbeck, to that nice lady there, is that we would, we want to have a proactive approach to this. We can't handle this the way we are right now. So we are going to be looking for an active partner, which is the way that they approached us originally in saying, partner with us, we're going to build this, we've bought the land, figure out how to partner with us, we'll figure out how to partner with you and try to build the best thing for the town. It's a big give and take. Are we going to get everything we want? Probably not. Is he going to get everything he wants? Probably not. But if we can meet someplace in the middle, we can, I'm hoping, and the reason I ran for office is, is to protect the exact things that you said. That's the goal. I'm hoping we're going to get there. Does that answer your question?
I think the overriding question that I, I've had from the beginning is, is how can we make this Londonderry-like? And that's, I think, the challenge that we have. And, you know, as John says, you know, that's, that's the goal because I think for this to succeed, one, I think the community has to be behind it, and the other, it has to be Londonderry-like. And there's various images of what Londonderry-like is from people that have been here for two years, five years, 30 years, or even 40 years. And Londonderry's gone through tremendous changes even in the almost 30 years that I've been here. And, you know, it's not stopped yet. But I think it's to put our, our flavor on it and something that's meaningful to us and has, you know, something inside that you feel positive about and good about. And that's what we want to, want to hear. You know, that's what we want to hear from people. And there'll be many, many opinions, and we want to put those all together somehow and find something workable.
Because even though it's changed, it's maintained a character that we want to keep throughout this process.
We're relatively good at it. I mean, some old timers will say, oh, it's just not the community, and anything is just like, oh, I...
Well, it isn't, it's still, you know...
This, this community has grown and it's not in a no-growth area, that's for sure.
Right.
We've got the major, major airport, the state, partly in our town, major interstate in our town. We've got a major, actually a major rail right away that goes between Manchester and Lawrence right in town. So that's where things congregate, where the transportation nexus is our. And we're here. That's probably why a lot of us are here, because of easy, easy transit from...
Still have the chalet, though.
To your, to your point, Mr. Chairman, the currently in the written document, towards the end of it, rather than get into a very technical explanation of architectural styles and things, if we can come up with images that have that Londonderry feel or what, what might fit here, that, I think, is a better way of approaching this. I've worked on a number of different projects that have codes that regulate how you create buildings, they get very complicated very quickly, and I think it take, it takes your eye off the ball. Here, we're, you know, we're looking at a master plan. I think we know, it's like pornography, you know it when you see it, we know it wouldn't be a good, a good building versus a bad building, and so let's just put, agree on some images and have those in the document.
Anyone else? Jimmy? Jimin Agnes, former longtime chairman and planning board member.
I knew you couldn't stay away.
So we can leave the...
Jimin Agnes, resident of Londonderry. First of all, I want the planning board to think of what they're doing. Look at the land, don't look at the project. It's a project no different than Reggie Ronzello brought in, Old Londonderry brought in, and there was another one that brought in that never was done. I'm not saying these guys aren't going to do it, but remember, planning was started in 1963, zoning. That's 40 years old, 45 years old. This is a 30-year project, things can change in 30 years. But if you look at the land, it sits night, right next to market, market basket, correct? 93. Londonderry Road's on the other side of Turnpike. You've got Gilcrest. You have a loop from 102 back to 102 that could be used for commercials, C3, C2, C1, multi-use of commercial because it's a prime commercial piece of property. There are approximately 12 houses on Gilcrest Road, which could be office space, and it's two or three houses on Pillsbury Road to Londonderry Road. The other one is, I believe the other piece he's talking about is industrial land to begin with, that could come to Londonderry Road. Now, you're talking 30 years. In 30 years, you could widen the road to a four-lane highway and it could be used. So we have to think of it as a town, not as a project. How many houses are coming in? How many kids we got to educate? How much money are we going to get to offset this? $300, is it going to take care of everything? They're talking about Portsmouth. You've got winter maintenance, how do you take care of winter maintenance? They have to plow the street and take the snow out, they're going to dump it somewhere. Or is it a condominium style? Is it going to be a condominium style so all the residents own their land? That's a question.
It'd be a range of both owned and rented.
Excuse me?
Owned and rented.
They're all going to own a piece of...
So somebody will own...
Some will own, some will rent.
Right. And some will be upper-level residential, some will be single-family residential.
Yeah, but they're going to have a condominium association.
There may be condominiums in the town center, but the outlying areas on the north side of Pillsbury Road, for example, be mostly single-family residential, may have its own association.
They're going to own it on their own private land, private road, correct?
Private land.
Private land with the private road, but we're maintaining it.
We haven't discussed the road yet.
All right, let me go one step further. If it's a, if it's a private road and you maintain it, and then, then these people don't want to pay for the maintenance anymore, they turn it back to the town and it becomes our cost. It's happened before in Yellowstone. So there's a cost that we have to assume we might get.
Yeah, but we've got Giannis, and he makes sure that the roads are up to speed before we, he allows them to go through, even if they're private.
Yes, but if, if he has the houses or the commercial sitting right on the road, you're going to be involved like Salem and Manchester and Portsmouth, you have to truck the snow away. You have no place to put it, so that's a big cost. So I, I wish the planning board would look into this situation, look at the land that we have, because we don't have any land on, commercial land on 102 left. I don't think we have 50 acres left to develop on the whole road. Andre, close? You don't know. So that's something the planning board has to look at. How much land do we have left for commercial? You read the paper, people want better restaurants. Where are they going to put them? There's no land. But that's a, that's a piece of land that could be turned commercial. And don't get rid of that piece of industrial land that if 4A ever goes in, that we already paid $5 million from, from what was developed that promised the world, then it'll develop or it might develop another way. So don't lose that land. As a planning board, you should look to see what you have, not what they're presenting, because what they're presenting is a lot of houses, that's cost to the town. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Anyone else? We're going to be doing this again anyway, so there'll be plenty of time for input and even some of our workshop sessions, we can have more informally and like break out into groups or something or something we'll have to talk about, you know, to make it more comfortable to get a, you know, conversation. This is kind of a formal situation here, but we'll be back again in, it's on the agenda for December.
Put it in as a placeholder for December.
It's a placeholder right now. It'll be December 8th.
Very good.
Uh, the lady back there, can you come to the microphone, please?
I've got a question.
Oh, okay.
Hi, Katie Wolf, Lancaster, One Lancaster Drive, Almanah Butter. And I've met Mike and had some conversations also with the town moderator. I was wondering if you've looked at all investigating, talked about bringing in the abutters, bringing in the people that it's directly impacting. If the committee has looked at all about bringing in a task force, like a, a group of citizens, concerned citizens, citizens that want to be more involved to act as a liaison or act, be more active in the process? Because I, there's a lot of chatter, there's a lot of people, a lot of buzz about it, and there's some misconceptions, there's some support, and I think if you develop that relationship more with the, you know, not the board, but the actual citizens that can communicate, have you looked at that or is that a possibility?
Be happy to. Sure, sure. I think anything is...
The applicant can, can approach you in any way they want to. If they want to get you together as a group, a task force has to be named by the town council. But, but developer can proactively come to you and say, okay, who do you want to be your, your spokespeople? Who do you want to be your representatives? And, and you can, they, I'm sure they would work with you to help you put together a group to do that. The task force size, you know more about this than I do, would, would probably, you'd accomplish more working with the applicant than trying to get a task force together, I think. I mean, please, you, you've done this more than I have.
Yeah, a task force is probably a little more difficult to handle and everything, and I think what you're looking for is probably like a more of an informal type of group, probably principally for communication, but have, struggle communication with the developer, probably more communication with the developer than we probably have. And then, then you, you know, communicate, you know, with the town staff and what's going on. So at least there's a, there's a loop of information going around. They'll probably have a lot more detail that we probably would get involved with at this point anyway, but it's the detail, you know, we've got to put together the detail as people talk and everything, and I think it'd be great to have like a, like a, a group that's representative of especially the abutters. You know, I think that's, and even people that, that, you know, second, tertiary, quatri, abutters from it also as, as part of it. But it's something you can work out with, with Mike and definitely keep us informed of what's, what's happening so that, that we know. But we're looking for all avenues of communication that, that people, so people can talk about it and verbalize it and get ideas out, because...
On a project like this, I like to have additional meetings with the abutters and interested people outside of the formal process. It keeps the formal process still going, but, you know, some people don't dare come up to a mic.
Sure.
Yeah, that's, that's difficult. That's where we've got to have, want more informal types of, you know, setups and everything. And something like that, I think, would be great.
We'll do that.
Do you guys still house at the, where you have the shurets?
Yes, we have an office there.
So I mean, people can knock on your door anytime?
We have, we're listed in the phone book now.
I have one other question. Has there been any discussion? I, I don't know if you've investigated the tax impact or had any projection, projections, but has the developer requested any kind of incentives for development? And I also had a question about the hotel tax. Is there any way that that hotel tax, we can put on an additional amount per room? Has that been discussed?
No, in fact, that would have to come from the state. Rooms and meals tax, the only, my statute, the only thing a town can do is levy property taxes. We can't do anything else and we can't offer any incentives at all. It's not, we don't have the statutory authority to do that. New Hampshire is a non-home rule state, which is a little unusual from how the state likes to picture itself. And basically, cities and towns can only do what's specifically delegated to them by the state legislature, so. So we, everything we do, we have to look for enabling legislation that allows us to do it, and those things we, we can't, we don't have the authority. I don't think the state would ever give us the authority either, so...
And I can answer your other question. I was not the first appointed official to speak with them. There were elected officials years prior to me who spoke with the developers. I can tell you from my conversations with them, that I've been very public about, I have been asked for nothing. I've been asked for no incentives, I've been asked for absolutely nothing except that we want to build something that the people in Londonderry want. We do not want to build something they don't want. But I've been absolutely not asked for anything, not approached for anything. Staff can speak for themselves, I, I don't know if they have.
Because again, as Art had mentioned, there really aren't the, we don't have as municipalities the ability to offer tax abatements or any types of incentives that you hear about in the south, the southeast and places where, you know, they give Toyota $10 billion in tax abatements. We can't do that in New Hampshire. We are prohibited by law.
I will tell you one conversation that has been a constant, and I think Mr. Kettenbeck will confirm this, is, is, is the one I repeated earlier when that nice lady asked the question was, is, I'm looking to figure out how to, how to protect our burden from the standpoint of the individual homeowner and the taxpayer in this town and for this project to pay for itself somehow and not impact the people who live here today. That's been my entire goal and frankly, the reason I ran for office.
And could I just, food for thought on one more thing? Is there a way that local government can protect the interest of local entrepreneurs that may want to be involved in the development or rent retail space? Have you thought about giving any incentive to local people? Because there, I've heard that discussion, I've heard people saying, I'm interested. What kind of impact will it have on existing businesses in town? Specifically, like real retail space? You know, there's going to be, is there going to be a movement? Is there going to be loss in other areas? And have that, has that been discussed?
Yes.
Yeah, probably, well, one, we don't really have that authority or anything.
Okay.
I mean, that's really a business decision in spite of our, our free enterprise. It's, and we have no, no power at all. I don't think the state has any power either to do that.
Certainly, if there's...
Through the Constitution.
Wait, I, I think, I think what I heard from the question is, is that, you know, is the applicant willing to work with local entrepreneurs? And I think that's what I heard.
To encourage them to, to use the, the area that they're developing, to, to have incentives for our local businesses to grow with this development, to make it a mutually beneficial relationship? Is that something that can be worked with?
We, we don't have the, any authority to, to do that, but, I mean, the developer can basically do what, do what they want, and I, you know, I think it's really up to them, and I'm sure that they're, you know, they know really what's, a lot more is going on in the, in the business world and with the commercial and industrial development and everything than, than we are even aware of, so...
So, so the other hat I wore in the past was chairman of the economic development committee. I, I would hope, and I'm sure it's happening already, that our director of economic development and for the town is Andre Garin, I would hope he's already having these types of conversations that he'll be having for many years as, because it, it lays inside his department and with Tim to make sure that we do what, they try to do what you're asking. I mean, as Art said, free enterprise is going to, is going to govern over what's going to happen, but we really depend on staff as that is part of their full-time job to attract the, you know, businesses that are welcome to the community, who enhance the community. But if I'm speaking for you or...
Actually, yeah, actually, he has been speaking for me, but...
I was pointing at him.
Have we had conversations with Mr. Kettenbeck about the businesses that are going to go there and whether or not there's incentives for local growth? No, absolutely not. We haven't had those conversations yet.
Is it possible to have those conversations?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, absolutely. We can have those conversations and, and this is a word about incentives, the, the state does have incentives, and, and none have been asked by the applicant to utilize them. A community development block grant is as an incentive, a revolving loan is an incentive, establish this as a enterprise revitalization zone is an incentive. So there are tools that the state does have, none of which the applicant has approached us about.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Hey, Mike, name, name and address, please.
Mike Speltz, 18 Sugar Plum. Trying to understand how the board will deal with the uncertainty that revolves around exit 4A. I know Andres Dueny said at one of the shuret meetings that if they were to lose 4A, they would basically have to limit the development to the sort of the Woodmont area. And 4A, I don't know that the traffic, you know, can be made to work. So, you know, as you go forward evaluating this application, how will you deal with that uncertainty? If, if only the Woodmont portion is developed, will that have a different impact on the town than if the whole project, as we see it up there, is developed? In other words, is the mix of commercial and residential homogeneous throughout that whole area? I don't think it is. I think that what's going to really happen is that there'll be a little more residential built first in the Woodmont phase, if I was listening correctly, a little more in the part north of Pillsbury, and then a, a large amount of commercial industrial over on the other side of 93. So, you know, if that, if that mix changes because of things that are beyond our control in Washington and Concord, you know, are we, are we going to get into some of the concerns that you've been hearing about earlier in terms of the, the mix, the tax base that we end up with?
I think it's a good, a good point. I mean, I think at this point, we don't know what the future for, for 4A is or anything, and that really is, I mean, even though Derry has committed 5 million, Londonderry has committed 5 million, I think the bulk of it is really up to the state and the feds and what, what happens. And I know Andres Dueny had said that I think at least a third of the project could be built without 4A, but the rest of it would require 4A. I think this is a quote from, from him, so...
Well, there's a couple of points of clarification. First of all, I did see on the presentation tonight that the final design engineering has been approved, or at least it's on the 10-year plan for exit 4A. So that's a positive indicator and perhaps tying into what Mike said from the governor's office. The other is, there's a perception among some people I'd like to clear up. On the southerly side, the Woodmont side, to the right of the blue area that might become southerly side, the Woodmont side, to the right of the blue area that might become a pond, right in there, the darker buildings are mixed-use buildings. And there's a lot of commercial proposed on this side of the, of 93. Shops, restaurants, stores, offices, and potentially even a hospital. So it's not just a residential project, as some on this side of 93. There's quite a bit of, if you look over a list of land uses, office, 2 million square feet, a couple hundred thousand square feet of retail, and then, you know, other uses. So it's not just residential, and I think we can address the 4A issue as we get through the process. But I think we can also safely do a master plan that is not dependent on 4A. Site plans would be, you know, because then we're going to be dealing with actual technical distribution of traffic to two specific locations and whatnot. But I don't think it need hold up the master plan discussion. We're going to assume that it is a part of it, it's been shown as a part of it. If three years after the master plan has been approved, it gets shut down, that might mean a new master plan. You know, we can have that discussion.
Yes. Andre?
I just wanted to supplement something that Rick had said, we're going to exit 4A. He is correct, in a 10-year plan, the exit 4A project is in there. There's money that DOT and the federal highways put towards it, but it just needs to be reiterated that that is going west. I mean, that's to build the-
East.
I mean, east, the western portion will still need to have to go through the process that the east side went through. So what's in there is to build that road, the interchange off of I-93 going east towards Dairy.
You won't have a left turn at the end of the road?
It might have a rest of left turn, but it won't go anywhere.
Won't go anywhere?
Anyone else?
I have to go all the way to Portsmouth and turn around and come back. Anything from the board?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mary.
I was just going to ask, you said something about, you know, if there is a change in 4A didn't come through, the master plan is approved, what's the process of, you know, would you just vacate this master plan and start again and do a different master plan?
There is, there is a process spelled out in the ordinance that allows for, if significant things change, market conditions, there is the ability to come back and amend that master plan, and then if that, or if the planning board approves that amended master plan, the old master plan goes away and the new master plan will then take its place.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you said some of the houses would be owned, some rented, but overall, you know, you've got a lot of streets, alleys. You showed you're planning on rear parking and stuff like that. Is there going to be a management company managing this overall, that's going to take care of the leases, the retail space, controlling that, managing the streets, managing the plowing, stuff like that?
Yes. How it's envisioned right now is, is that the corporation that owns the land will start the process, and as things are developed, they'll be different. Let's suppose you build 200 units that are market-rate apartment. That'll be handled by that apartment process. If there are condos built, there will be a condo association, very similar to what takes place today, but at each level, as it comes before you, after the master plan is approved, we have to answer those questions directly to you, and we have to show you the viability of it, and we have to show you that it's self-sustaining. And that's the process, and that's the process and the framework that we're going through right now, is that as we come to you, we have to prove it again, and again, and again, and again, as we go through the process, that we are meeting the master plan, and that we're meeting the specifics of the plan before you. And we answer those questions as we move through the process.
Okay, good. I mean, it's just, just to Yannis' and Jim's, you know, points, that, you know, we've gotten burned in the past, and Dairy, I see it in the paper all the time, Dairy's fighting it every winter with certain roads that are private, and, oh gee, we don't want to take care of them, we want the town to take care of them and plow. And I don't want to be 30 years down the road and all of a sudden, oh, well, we don't want to take care of these roads anymore, we're going to give them to the town.
You're not going to see any arterial roads that aren't owned by the town in this project.
Okay. Who wants to go first there? Your hands are up at the same time, so.
You know, it was going to be an early night.
Just to follow up on Mike Speltz's questions about the dependability of this project as a master plan on exit 4A, I, with the way I look at this, it heavily depends on exit 4A. Because if you look, if you look the east side, without 4A doesn't exist. If you look anything north of Pillsbury Road, does not exist. Anything halfway south of Pillsbury Road does not exist, because 102 will not be able to take the traffic. So I thought that this, the master plan, depends heavily on exit 4A. We believe that one day exit 4A going east will be built, because right now, there's no money in the construction of exit 4A going east even, in a 10-year plan. Now, but going west, it will take many years to start a project from scratch, because there is no connections going west. But somehow, we have to look at this, and if we were approving this project overall, as for the, what zoning can be done, what could be built over there, that's why I look at it as a master plan. But looking at the road layout, if the exit 4A is not built, whatever is proposed here, it cannot be constructed. So I think, you know, there is maybe, maybe I misunderstood, you know, our previous meanings, but the way I look at this, it heavily depends on exit 4A.
Let me, let me, let me go into a little history. Originally, we purchased properties on the, on the east side. In 2007, the federal government mandated a westerly access on, to be studied later date, but to be included in this interchange 4A. That's when we actively looked at Woodmont and other properties on the eastern, on the westerly side. And that's what prompted our, what we consider to be a necessary play to acquire land on the west side, because we were going to be developing on the east side. And if you're developing on the east side, and somebody has mandated, the federal government has mandated, that you have to have access on the westerly side for good planning, it behooves us to then move to the other side and purchase that land as well, as a defensive move and as a development, as a development move. So the reason that we're on the west side at all is because of a federal mandate in 2007.
Yannis, I haven't got about you, Jim, so.
I was on the technical advisor committee, I studied exit 4A for the last 15 years, and been involved with this, and then I was the one who was promoting the connection to the west. Because if town of London Dairy, because of a lawsuit, was stuck to pay $5 million for exit 4A and benefits very little if going only east, I was looking that at least we should have connections to the west. It makes sense. This will be only one time this exit will ever be built. And to get only to the east and spend $5 million, right now, this exit is going to cost three times that amount of money, going only east, then, you know, for $10 million cannot be built. But I strongly agree that, yes, it should be, and I was proposing that on those meetings, now that the feds mandated that, that it should be looked to the west. And those days, 10 years ago, we were promoting that this will be open space, and we do not want an exit going west. I said, 10 years from now, those days, who knows what's going to happen? Exactly to 10 days, I would like to say, I told you so. But, but that's, that's exactly, because Reggie keeps laughing, yeah, Yannis, you kept saying that. But that's why, if that exit is built, it makes sense to be built in both directions, because at least will town benefit another access to the highway between exit 5 and exit 4. If that will serve us all the way from Leachville Road, from Stonehenge, to make a connection over there, not only from this development, it will be beneficial, the town will have that exit to the major highway. So we are not saying, no, that the exit to the west should not go, it's just only that, what I pointed out, that for this master plan, yes, it depends on both directions, not only one direction, but it depends on that, on that exit 4A.
Jim?
When 4A was voted in, they promised people no west exit. Here it is, 10, 12 years later, they're talking about it. So they're talking about a 30-year master plan. That's going to change. How many times has our master plan changed?
I think about every five years, I, no.
Or so. So it's going to change. So what you see is not what you're going to get. The question I had, the first time I spoke here, is a corporation is going to own the private roads, correct?
If there are private roads, we haven't had that discussion yet.
Corporation, condominium association is going to own the roads. What happens if the corporation goes belly up? Who's paying for the roads?
It's not what we said.
Excuse me?
That's not what we said. I don't want to be argumentative, but that's not what we said.
Yeah, I don't want any arguments, anyway.
I don't want any, but I believe you said a corporation or private is going to own the roads and plow the roads and pay the taxes. I assume they pay taxes on the road. If they're privately owned.
If they own the property, yeah.
If they don't. Well, I'm wrong again. But we have a building in town that has a condominium association that doesn't pay taxes on their land, the town owns it, and they still use it. Are we going to have another situation like that? It's been going on for 10 years.
Yeah, we've learned our lessons usually the hard way.
I think I've told you once before, but-
Oh, yes.
So we have to watch out for that, because we don't want to own the roads and maintain them, because they don't meet our standards, because the snowplow alone will cost a fortune just to get rid of.
Yeah.
And we'll have to maintain them.
Dana knows that well.
So we have to be very careful. But I would suggest you look at the land and see what the best use is for the town and not the developer.
Yes.
And a 30-year master plan, that's too far.
It'd be, it'd be changing.
And what are you going to build first, houses or commercially? You going to build at both the same time?
Mixed-use village.
I think I answered that question as well. We did decide that we're going to do both, both mixed-use and commercial and residential at the same time from the inception.
Thank you.
Those were my comments.
Okay. Anyone else? Board have anything?
I just want to thank everybody for coming, even if you didn't come up to speak. At least you're in the audience, and this is the best attention, attendance we've had in, you know, quite a long time where people haven't left after the first presentation, so thank you for saying.
There'll be plenty of opportunity for input, anyway, and there's various means of input. You can email us. I think one of the things you probably would need to work on is a group of abutters and closer abutters and everything.
Yes.
As a line of communication and as a line of ideas, and to communicate with us. There's going to be the website to get information, especially this, what we've had tonight. I think we've got to, you know, think, think about things, and I think what, you know, Jimmy says is very important about, you know, looking at the land and everything. There's a lot we have to really assimilate and put together, there'll be many meetings on this. Right now, we have a slot open in our agenda for December 8th for continued discussion with this, so that's, at least that's a, that's a known now. So, and like Mary, I really thank everyone for coming, and, yes.
One thing I forgot to mention, it's a little technical issue. It came up during the charrette. The, Mike is proposing to donate a little over acre of land to the town for the expansion of the cemetery, and I actually laid it out, and it's behind you, so we'll be, we'll be doing a boundary line adjustment with the town, because cemeteries aren't actually allowed in the PUD.
Yeah, I think we did, and we weren't looking, looking at, we were thinking more the living, I guess, I was.
But as Rick is mentioning, if this land is done, and the lot line adjustment is done prior to the PUD taking place, this can then be outside of the PUD, and then that donation could take place.
Yeah, it's probably we-
Yeah, I know the council's very interested in this.
Are those plots?
Believe it or not, we were approached by a number of people on that at the charrette. That's where this came from.
I'm sure there'll be a lot of questions, both from the public and from the board, that would want to ask of the folks in the development. Do we want to, like, centralize those? Do we want to ask them direct? Do we want to pose those for the next time we come in and meet with them? So we can, you know, I've got questions that I'm formulating right now, and I'd probably like to get them to them, but I don't know whether, it'd become very disorganized if we don't control that, certainly from the board.
Yeah, I mean, because you couldn't, you couldn't, you know, forward stuff like, like-
Maybe it goes to Tim and Tim, you know, presents them to them.
That'd be the best way, through Tim. He would be communication central, and that keeps us from sending email with each other all over the place, which we don't want to do. Our communication will be with Tim and communicate with Tim.
So if we've got questions, send them to Tim.
Send them to me, and I can get them.
They've pulled onto you guys.
And then perhaps you might have a frequently asked questions button on your website.
Sure.
So that, you know.
We want to have it as interactive as possible.
Right.
Good. Anything else? Any questions of us?
No. Thank you for your time.